You've seen most of it anyway, the pages, some of one of the pages that I gave was the form you and I went over.
Yes.
So maybe a few new things. Get a spare pen.
I do.
I want this right here.
These pens all look the same, but they're different colors, but I don't get them from any place. I get them from all over because I would just have to.
Thank you.
He was mentioning that they had a hard time hearing at the last meeting.
We all need to speak louder.
We could try that this time, too. That'd be nice.
All set? I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and help us with the pledge.
Pledge number 20, 2011.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And roll call.
Okay. Counselor Bowie is excused. Counselor Bickford?
Yeah.
Counselor Ward?
Here.
Counselor LaRashell?
Here.
Counselor Pomelo is excused. Counselor Mason?
Here.
And Counselor Lunt?
Here.
First item, toina?
First item is under public hearing, amendments to chapter 70 zoning ordinance and maps.
Mike, do you want to get up and just quietly introduce that?
Good evening, counsel. The zoning ordinance is an intricate part of the comprehensive plan, and the purpose of this is to develop and a plan for the development of the town of Lisbon along with the zoning maps. The zoning maps indicate the different zoning districts and are part of the tools for the zoning ordinance to be, the ordinance to be forcible. There are three regions, major regions in the zoning map. There's a residential region, residential, and then the commercial and industrial regions, and also the agricultural and farmland regions. Most, most of your residential regions are usually in the inner part of the town, and your commercials and industrial are usually on the outer edge, and then the farmland and agricultural obviously on the outer skirts of the town. And that's what composes your zoning map. Again, the zoning ordinance itself is a tool to regulate those different districts. Again, and another important issue to keep in mind, too, is the adoption and enforcement of zoning ordinance is the statutory requirement that a map be prepared and adopted as part of the ordinance. Failure to adopt the map would render the zoning ordinance unenforceable. So they both have to be complementing each other. So again, we have the zoning ordinance, which is an enforcement tool, and the zoning map, which informs you where these, all these zoning districts are placed, so.
Can you point out where the changes, if there are changes made, what they, where they were?
Yes, there were a few changes made from the current zoning map. Obviously, this, this is the current zoning map that we have in place now. And I'll show you, yeah, good. I'll show you the differences. These are the locations that were changed here. We added another district, which is called open space two. And all that is, is to preserve the agricultural, agricultural and farmland use. In other words, have bigger tracts of land to preserve that. And then the other area was commercial area down here towards the Dragon Pit, or 196 going towards Lewiston. That, there was a little addition there. And again, the open space two was added on to the zoning map. You can see where it wasn't on the current map there, so. There was two areas where we had a commercial area designated to the map, but that was eliminated because of all the people in town didn't want this commercial area. Now, by Upland area and up here by the Ridge Road area, just on the Sabatys line, so. Anyway, after all this, the workshops and the work we did, this is, this is the proposed future land use for the zoning districts, so. And that was our current map there.
Okay. There any questions?
Not for us at this point, but thank you, Mike. I'd like to open a public hearing if everybody has, anybody has an interest in speaking on this ordinance. Larry Fillmore from Lisbon.
Did I understand, Mike, to say that it's the law that requires the passing of the zoning ordinances to be accompanied by a map?
That is correct. They both, they both have to be in place and adopted.
So what you're saying is every time you change an ordinance, you have to change the map?
No. No, the zoning map depicts the zoning districts for certain uses in the town of Lisbon as it were. The zoning ordinance regulates those districts.
I understand that clearly. The only thing I just asked was, Mike, is it a law that requires every time you change an ordinance, that you change the map? Because my understanding of what took place here was AvCOG took our ordinances, chapter 70 in our charter, turned around and put that into a chart format so that it would make it easier to understand and to utilize, for Mike and everybody else that utilized it, it made it more easily for someone to understand what was going on and what the ordinances were really saying. Now, that took AvCOG a long time to do. According to the council, they said it took an awful long time, and Mark was emphasizing that. I got it. I got that. And I agree 100% with that. But my question is, are we talking apples and oranges? If you do, then I think you need two votes, one for the apples, one for the oranges. Now, if what AvCOG did was just take what we currently had on the books and put it into an easier format to utilize, which is what we talked about a couple of meetings ago, and that's what was said, took place, then there should be no changes that affect anything in the maps. But if we're trying to slide changes to the comprehensive plan by incorporating the maps in with the charts, then I think we have a problem. Because I don't think that you can turn around and say that you're, you've got apples and oranges. The, the charts are perfect, I love them. But I don't think that you can include the changes as part of the AvCOG charts. Did I explain that?
You did, and just to respond back.
I get it right?
Totally understand where you're coming from.
Okay.
I believe what you're gonna find is, is through the past couple, three years, the work they've been doing has been the changes that actually correspond with our comprehensive plan. It actually makes our comprehensive plan comes into full effect. The changes were required. The map basically just is a visual of the changes that have done. So it hasn't been the idea of just them taking what we had and putting it in easier chart form. The changes in the map are actually the difference of what you're gonna see in the charts. So it does correspond. One of the questions we had coming in, I met with Steve, was the idea of we actually looked at the maps and, and we thought there were actually two different programs, the ordinance and the maps. But they do go hand in hand. One can't work without the other. So this, this, this public hearing is basically just to, to make sure that you're aware of what they were, to actually be able to show, show you what the maps were and the changes that we went over in the first reading. We actually do have the people from the planning board here that have worked very hard on it. But the idea of the legalities of changing, if one thing in the ordinance, to redo the maps, I don't think you're gonna see those maps change regardless if you make a small change to the ordinance, because the zones are what the zones are. And if, if I'm speaking correctly, if I'm not, please, have someone correct me from the planning board. But the planning board members are here, but I don't, I think we have pretty much everything covered when it comes to the legalities of the map versus ordinance, where I think we are apples and apples.
Okay. As long as, as long as we're sure on that, because I think, I personally think that you needed two votes. Because the ordinances were in place, they depict what you can do within those zones. Doesn't say where the zones are, it just tells what you can utilize each zone for, what you can have and what you can't have.
We actually asked the question this week, Larry, and through the state, and basically the question was, this is a one package.
Okay. Very good.
It comes all two in one. Is there anybody else in the audience that has any questions about the public hearing? Or would like to make a comment? If not, I'll close a public hearing. Twyla next.
We'll open the second public hearing for a renewal junkyard permit for Campbell's Used Auto Parts and Houston's Auto Salvage.
I'd like to open that public hearing. And these are, two salvage yards have been in existence in town for quite some time, and then basically we're just renewing their license, and we're required to have a public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak on that. Seeing nobody, we'll close our public hearing. Twyla next.
Under audience participation, at this time, those in the audience who wish to address the council may come forward. Please use the microphone at the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit comments to five minutes or less.
Any interest? Larry?
Okay, I know we're going into budget, Larry Fillmore from Lisbon. I know we're going to start the budget season, you put out a schedule on there, very much appreciated, I really appreciate that. I'd like to see if we can prepare the budget in such a manner that all line items are listed in the department that they pertain to in order to receive a total cost of operations for each department. Let's take the public works. Streetlights and hydrant rental have nothing to do with public works, okay? Nothing to do with them. Now, I don't understand why we put them in there last year, okay, unless it was to, on the pie chart, make their, their department look big, okay? But it has nothing to do with their operational costs. People need to know where they're spending their tax dollars, so we need to have all line items in the department that they belong in, so we can see what each department actually costs us to operate during the year. Another example, information technology costs, there are some of those costs that belong in the communication center, and they're not depicted there. Along with the police liability insurance is not in the police department, okay? It's under general accounting. How can you tell what a department costs to operate during the year, to know whether or not it's costing us too much in tax dollars if we can't go to that department and see the total cost of operating it? If the line items are hidden in other departments or other areas of the budget, then we don't have a visual of what it costs to operate that department. And I think that we need to, this year, put the line items where they belong in the budget so that we can get a very good idea of what costs we're spending in each department. Thank you.
Roger Cody, Lisbon Falls. Benham once or twice. In the last vote that we had, we received 2,025 votes in favor of putting the budget to the people to 514. Do you have any idea when you intend to address that issue, or if you intend to address it?
Actually, we do. And Roger is very up on the idea of doing it. We've actually talked to one of our last workshops, we actually worked with the school a little bit to find out the details of theirs and some of the legalities of it. I think we're gonna use it, I didn't use it, but we're gonna actually make it a kind of a, a, a definite works, through a workshop, but a definite process we're gonna go through this year to try to find the legalities. I don't think it's a question if it's gonna get done, Roger, it's just a matter of putting all the right details in place. The vote was definitely heard, there's no question about it. In our last workshop, there, I don't believe there was one council that did not agree that we needed to work through it. It's just more the idea of making sure we have everything in place to do it properly.
Is there something that we'll be voting on this year?
This year in November?
This year.
I mean, next year?
On this year's budget, will we be voting on it?
I don't believe there's probably enough time for us to actually do that, to do it properly. But it is definitely in the works, and it's definitely gonna happen. I mean, definitely, the votes were heard.
So if the people wanna vote on the budget this year, we gotta push it through as a, our own referendum, right?
I don't even know if there's enough time to actually even make that work.
We've got 30 days. If we put it through by the first of the year and have it in play, you've got 30 days to have a vote on it, right?
Potentially. I mean, I'd be honest with you, I don't know the total legalities of that, but we had, we had worked, we, as a council, definitely agreed that it's something that we wanted to do, but we definitely wanted to make sure that we had all the right stuff in place to make it, if we are gonna put it in.
So the intent is not to vote on this year's budget, is what you're saying?
From the council discussions, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Vernon Dyer, resident of Lisbon, Lisbon Falls, be exact. I noticed tonight that we are bringing up the issue regarding Lisbon transportation connection, the Lisbon connection. Tonight, I had the fortune of running on the Lisbon connection, and I looked at the backseat of the driver, and there was a sign indicating that the service is gonna drop December 30th. And I know that soon, soon indeed, that elderly, many living at firewell mills and through the city are gonna have no way of grocery shopping, or gonna go searching for grocery shopping, or some ways to do this. I know that people who are holding down jobs, and some of these jobs are marginal jobs, I don't mean, I don't mean to say these people are marginal, but I'm just saying they cannot afford the expense of owning a vehicle. They pay taxes, they pay their bills, they pay mortgages, but they cannot simply squeeze off the expense of owning a car. And they rely on this form of transportation. And yet, there are other people who their cars break down. I spoke to somebody on the way this week, their car broke down, and they needed the car to get into Lewiston, I mean, the bus to get into Lewiston. And there's all types of situations where people need this, the Lisbon connection very badly. I sincerely hope we have found some way to deliver this service. It is something that we definitely need, and we should not overlook. I hope this is a particular situation. Thank you, I just wanted to be heard on this matter.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Dot Fitzgerald, I didn't know if I needed to be recognized. Dot Fitzgerald, resident of Lisbon Falls. I did attend the Tuesday, last Tuesday evening's budget, the workshop. Had no idea what it was going to be on until I got here, and it was on the budget. It would be very, very helpful to know in advance. Town has a website, and if you could put on the website what the workshop is going to be about. I'm very disturbed that we, as a townspeople, taxpayers, will not be voting on this upcoming year's fiscal year's budget. You've got six months to do it. You've got six months to finalize your budget and put it on a ballot. Evidently, the school department is looking to move up the vote on their budget to May, and I'm wondering why. I mean, we always voted on the school budget in, in June, and it would be so easy and more cost effective to vote on the school budget and the town budget at the same time. Is this a deliberate way of not voting on the town budget? Because it's, if you vote on the, the school budget in, in May, you certainly aren't going to have your town budget ready by that time. You had a hard time getting it ready for June 30th, June 30th, this, for this fiscal year.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes.
If, and we've, we're addressed as an open meeting, so I mean, it's, it's nothing that we're trying to be sly about. The school board and the superintendent approach the council and the town manager to actually try to have their vote moved up. The downfall of what the school is run against is when they actually voted later time, last year they had to lay off, legally lay off, up to 30 teachers, and then rehire them after their vote, because there's a window of time from the time that they legally have to do that to the point where they vote. So this isn't anything sly or underhanded, this is strictly a request from the school department to try to save money, to try to get their vote on a timely fashion, so they can actually do their job without actually costing them more money. It's nothing underhanded, you're gonna find this council is very straightforward, and most of this, all of it was actually talked about at public hearing, not public meeting, I should say, and through workshop with the school department discussing why it would be better for them to move it up. The dates are fairly close to do, but we're trying to work with them, as the town should, to actually try to make the school board a little bit more efficient. So that's, that's the reason, there's, there's nothing underhanded, strictly a request from the school board to the town council to try to make their vote earlier, to try to lay off on some of the problems that they have. It's very involved, and, and if you actually had some questions about it, what I'd feel the best thing to do is actually call the superintendent's office and ask Mr. Green, he can explain it in detail, and I'm sure he will for you.
I know, I haven't, I've been remiss by not attending the school committee meetings. I just haven't been able to find the time to do the workshops, the town council meetings, plus all of the other meetings, and I just feel it's, you have six months to do it, and I would hope that, that you could see a way to let the townspeople and the taxpayers vote on the next budget.
One of the things that does happen, and we did speak at, at length about, is we actually have to go to vote to actually make the, to make the charter change, to be able to make the change so we can vote on the budget. So we actually have to go through a vote, a series of voting, to even get, even if the council was to put together a charter change and do the public hearings, it would still have to go to vote for the public to vote on it before that would come into, into our charter to allow us to do it. So there is some timeframe that's involved. We just didn't think we could actually pull it off, or we didn't wanna spend the money to do an extra vote if we had to, to do it before this, this, for, for this next budget vote. It is gonna happen, it's just a matter of the idea of doing it and doing it right and, and doing it the proper way.
Well, you've got five months to get a charter change on the ballot for the, for the May school department budget. Suppose you can do that?
I'm just going by what the council itself, it spoke as a whole, I can only speak for myself, but the, the council itself, when we discussed this, didn't actually decide that they weren't, they didn't feel that they had time to do it before this next vote, but they would actually try to get it in place and do workshops. Right now, we're coming into our budget season, and every Tuesday, as you mentioned, there is a workshop.
Trust me, I know.
It's either, it's either a town meeting or a budget workshop, so the next three months, we'll be meeting every week, and we just don't think we have time to actually work through this difficult budget and get all this together the way we should.
All you have to do now, you said that it requires a charter change, so do you suppose you can put a charter change to that effect on the ballot, for the, have a separate ballot when we vote on the school budget in, in May?
I mean, I can't answer for the council, the only thing I can answer is, as a council, we actually spoke, and that's what the decision they had made, so.
Is it possible to, to poll the, the council right now?
To, the whole council's not here, so it's really not, not doable.
The ones that are here, would they be in favor of?
Dot, can I address the subject? As Roger has always been trying to push this, and, and we've said, I think our town attorney has said numerous times, it's not as simple as just putting the question in one section of the charter. There are, he said approximately seven different chapters within the charter that would have to be addressed and reviewed by legal counsel, and then brought back to the council. And there's a process that has to go through to make sure we've covered all our bases in the charter in order to do that. So it's, it's not just as simple as putting a question on the ballot to change the charter. We've gone through this numerous times, and the council spends time on charter amendments, we do it over a lengthy period of time, so it's not that easy.
I think you're making it more difficult than it should be.
Anybody else for audience participation?
I'm Don Fellows from Fairview Drive in Lisbon. I just have a request, and I noticed that under council orders and resolutions, that the 2012-13 capital improvement budget is on there for, I assume for your action tonight. I request that that be removed, or until the planning board has had its chance to look at it, if required. Thank you.
Next, Twyla?
Okay. Under consent agenda, any council wishing to have an item removed may do so now. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered next. Seeing none?
Is there anybody? I don't believe there's any.
Okay. Order 2011-219 to approve the minutes of, of November the 29th, December 6th, and a renewal junkyard permit for Campbell's Used Auto Parts and Houston's Auto Salvage.
So moved. Second that.
All those in favor?
Order passed, 5-0.
Next item?
Next item, under council orders, resolutions, and ordinances, order 2011-220, chapter 70 zoning ordinances and maps. This is the second reading, a roll call vote is required.
Does anybody have any questions at all, or on the second reading? Ordinance. Yeah, we need a motion to actually move this forward?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Before we vote, I just wanna make sure that, as many people here from the planning board that have been part of this for many years, have been very active with this, and there's been a lot of work involved in this. We do appreciate everybody that's done everything they needed to do to get us to this point. I realize it's been kind of a long... Does anybody have any questions at all or on the second reading? Coordinates? Yeah, we need a motion to actually move this forward?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Before we vote, I just want to make sure that, as many people here from the planning board that have been part of this for many years, have been very active with this and there's been a lot of work involved in this. We do appreciate everybody that's done everything they needed to do to get us to this point. I realize it's been kind of a long process. So, we do appreciate you coming here tonight. So, if there was any questions, I know it's tough for you all to get together at one point in time, but, and from the state, it's very nice to see that we have the support of everybody to make sure this goes through. And if there was any questions, they would have been answered. So, a roll call vote?
Okay. Council Bickford?
Yes.
Council Ward?
Yes.
Council LaWasha?
Yes.
Council Mason?
Yes.
Council Lunt?
Yes.
We have five a's, zero nays. Order passed.
The next item was requested to be removed and could you speak on that, Steve?
Yep, I can. We put the capital budget together and it was an oversight that we did not get it to the planning board on time. According to the charter, and our attorney is here to interpret that, I just need to present it to the council on or before the first of January. And you don't have to take any action at this point. You have until March to vote, to accept that. So, what I'll do is you have the budget in front of you. We can come back to that at another meeting, possibly January 3rd, but we have presented it.
I was just going to say, the planning board just has to give their recommendation to council before February, the first day of February. So, everybody should get it tonight for their review and the planning board gets their recommendation to council before the first of February.
So, we can still review it. So, do you want to go through it?
I would like to go through it. That way, they have most of the planning boards here. So, they can actually get a, if they do have any questions, maybe they can ask before they get the written documentation.
Okay. Let's, we'll go to the first page, which has the funded, it's a spreadsheet that says funded and it's got infrastructure, fire department. Should be the top page after you get through the written aspect.
Yeah, there we go. Yep, talking about that.
Okay. Does everybody have that page in front of them?
Oh, it should look like that.
I think I pulled it out of order because I was looking at it.
You can actually verbally describe it.
Yeah, I'll find it. I have it here.
There we go.
On this page, this is, this is the program that we have in place and we're currently funding. If you look at the infrastructure, we have listed here the items that are funded, the computer server, which in 2013, that lease runs out. MTM roof, you'll see the total cost, underestimated cost, and how we have spread it out, the length of the bond, and what we pay annually to that, which is $15,000 a year. The Fisher Road Bridge is also one of the bond items that we funded. And again, once we, that is $10,000 a month or year over the length of the bond, as is the ET Smith siding, that was part of the bond as well. All these are in our budget and we'll have those in our areas until such time we're done paying for them. And same with the town clerk, election booths, those are in there as well. We just, we've had some of that money available, we just haven't spent it yet because the state, secretary of state can't decide what kind of voting machines they want to use. The fire department, truck replacement program, that is in place and that's a separate spreadsheet, which we've seen numerous times and I'll go briefly through that when we get to that. Public works, you can see we're, the 1996 tractor, we're still funding that. This will be the last year on that lease, on the 2009 loader that we purchased. We've got such good rates that we only have this coming budget year to pay for it and we should be done. And also the stainless steel dump body, which is paid off in 2014. The parks, there's nothing currently in the parks budget that we're paying for. We finished up most of the projects that were there. Recreation, we included the trails grant there. That, again, is a bond and that's what we're paying on that. And all we're waiting on is the Army Corps of Engineers to finish their permitting process. The police department, we purchased at least three unmarked cars. Those will be paid for in 2015. And then we have the 2010 Crown Victoria, which will be paid off this coming year. And Solid Waste, which is our trash trailer, that's a two-year, it'll be paid off in 2014. So, these are all what we're funding currently and what we're committed to paying. And the second page there just gives you the totals of the operating budget and where all the money goes, how much it is. On the, on the back page, it says, you'll see it says unfunded. And this is some of the things that we have in our capital budget that have not been funded yet. We have listed here the community track, which we anticipate will cost us $60,000 and the school $60,000. We had the grant ready to go, but both the school department and the town felt this was not the year to fund it. We had better things, more important things to spend our money on this year, especially the bus service. The total cost of that with the grant is around $280,000. Again, the school construction, that's a estimate of what would it cost if we were to bond that. That's not funded. The MTM gym facade, that we estimate, just the front entrance where the people go into the gymnasium, to fix that is around $20,000. That's replace the large glass windows and doors and do some of the brickwork. MTM windows and siding, again, we had part of that done through a grant. We estimate that it will require $30,000 to finish it up in 2016. It would be a nice program that we could put that money aside and do one side a year and get that done. But I also have some grants that I'm going to be looking at to help fund that. Hopefully, we can get some funding. Library air conditioning units, that's funded for this year and we'll see if we can fit it into our budget, as is the library interior improvements that need to be done. We had some water damage in the basement. We need to, we got that fixed and we just need to clean it up, do some wall replacement. ET Smith Hose Company, they have a roof that needs to be replaced. We were hoping that we would be able to use the remaining funds that we had from our bond that we did not expend on the siding, but the bond does not allow us to do that. So, that has to come out of the operating budget. Public Works Office Edition, again, this is a topic we've talked about numerous times to bring us into ADA compliance and give us more space for the office staff and have it on the first floor. We had an estimate done after we had some plans drawn up and they figured about $100,000. And again, that's something we've been putting off for years and Mr. Bickford thinks we can do it for half that price. So, it'd be nice to see if we could. The fire department, again, this is part of their ongoing budget where we've not funded that at full capacity over the last few years. So, we're behind the gun on keeping up with that. And if you look at the funding for 213, 214, on through, in order to stay on track with what was done a few years, quite a few years back, we are now, instead of funding it at $100,000 a year, we will have to fund it at $150,000 a year. And then it increases in 2015 in order to stay on track. So, that will be a discussion we have during the budget process. Public works, again, pickup trucks, need to replace some of those. We're looking at lease agreements in 2014. We're looking at a cabin chassis in 2014. Paving, again, we put that ongoing at $250,000. And again, we'll discuss that during the budget process to see where we can fit that in, not if, but where and how much. And again, the stainless steel body, that's an ongoing lease payment loader is $100,000, but that doesn't, that's, new loader would be out to 2017. Recreation, there's nothing currently in the recreation program. Some of the things that Mark had, we've completed. The police department, we've discussed this in the last couple of years. The ACO truck is up for replacement. You can see the estimated cost at $21,000. This is one I strongly will recommend that we fund because our share of that is only $5,250 roughly, because Sabattis and some of the other communities will share the cost of that. So, it's not quite as expensive. And the replacement cruisers, you'll see that program, we are looking out to 2014 to start that. And the two SUVs, these, one of them is a K-9 unit and one is, instead of buying a Crown Victoria, which is a car we usually have for patrols, we're recommending doing one, two SUVs, one for the K-9 and one for just the other uses that they are currently using. And then PD4 is another vehicle replacement, but that wouldn't start until 2014. Solid waste, we're currently funding a trash trailer, as we said earlier. We're looking at trying to pave part of that yard and then we're looking out to 2014 to do that. The Pine Woods Road water line, this is a water line that Wayne Ricker has suggested we do because we have a dump burial. And each year, we test, we have well testing done out there to make sure there's no contamination. We would not have to do that if we had a water line out there, but that's $90,000 and we'll continue to test the wells. And again, a replacement with a Ford Aromax, that's at $80,000 and that's, we're looking out to 2017. And wood trailer is something that we need to replace. It's $50,000 and hopefully, we'd be able to do that this year. And again, that's subject to the budget. So, that's basically, the capital budget hasn't changed much, really not a lot of changes here from what we've had over the years. It's just following through on our regular vehicle replacements and equipment replacement along with some additional capital projects like windows and libraries and things like that. So, that's it in a nutshell. In your packets, you will see each individual department request and it outlays a little bit larger, print is much larger so you can see it. But if you have any questions, and I'll make sure Mr. Fellows at the planning board gets their material ASAP. I apologize for not getting to you.
So, they will actually have the full packet we have and if there's any discussions between now and then, if the planning board necessary, we actually do a workshop to go over it prior to you if there's any misunderstandings or changes that you would recommend. So, please just, as you get the information, please be informed with us just to make sure we're all together on it. As you're listening to that, you actually talked about the funded and the unfunded. It's just really important to know that the unfunded is kind of like a, a wish list. Exactly. It's not what we absolutely have the funding to do or even can fund, it's what we need. And it's not even really a wish list. If you talk to the departments, it's actually when we start talking about planning ahead. I mean, that's kind of the stuff they know that they're going to need to replace. It's just a matter of how far we can actually push it down the road before we start replacing a lot of items. So, I'm looking forward to the planning board reviewing that and actually then go back and follow the schedules so we can actually get that voted through. But we've made our requirement for you discussing it before January 1st, right? And part of that was the school also, right?
Yeah. The school gave you their presentation that discussed it, their workshop that they had, just, it was a few pages. You should all have had that. And the water department has their ongoing, they're supposed to present something and all they have is their ongoing infrastructure on 196 and then the recent updates I got from them this week. So, I'll make sure everybody gets a copy of that out of mine as well.
Thank you.
By charter, the planning board is supposed to review the capital budget to make sure it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So, it's the planning board.
Tyler, next?
The next item is under other business finance director's report.
Thank you, Ford.
Thank you, Ford.
So, you should all have in front of you your report for November. Looking at the revenues, excise tax is just over 40% collected at $84,000 for the month of November. Last November, brought in $68,000 with a year-to-date collection at 39%. So, we're looking right on track with excise collections. State revenue sharing is just over 43% collected with $64,000 recorded for the month and $359,000 year-to-date. This is also looking to be right on track with our budgeted projections of $830,000, though we will continue to monitor it. For the month of November, we received an urban rural incentive payment at $26,000, which brings the year-to-date collection to 49%. So, that's looking right on track. The police department received the first half, first half of the Sabattis and Durham ACO payments in the amount of $14,000. The transfer station has taken in another $8,000 from collections for a year-to-date total of $47,000. In total, the transfer station is 63% collected on their total revenues, which is 10% better than they were last year at this time.
That's great.
The recreation department revenues have brought in another $7,000 for their basketball and before-school programs. And the library is right on track at 60% collected, as is Beaver Park with 60%. Do you have any questions for me on revenues?
General assistance, do we have any hope at all?
I'm not sure. I can try to find a better answer for you for the next meeting. I'm not sure why that's not coming in.
Constantly have to hound them. We have submitted all our requests for reimbursement and it just hasn't come yet.
Do you actually feel that the, what we actually budgeted for that general assistance is going to, is going to work for what we actually have or, I know there's been an increase in need, so.
Yeah, I know there has been since, honestly, since I've been here, nothing has come in. So, I'm not really sure. I mean, this is one of the gray areas for me that I don't, I'm not positive with the process because I haven't seen anything come through for it. So, I have a hard time speaking.
Judy Goddard has been in the building quite a bit recently. I'll double check with her, but we will make a phone call to the DHHS to see where our reimbursement is and their funding issues, I'm not sure we'll get it.
Where do we stand as far as for the ability that we have money budgeted to use? I mean, is that, I know that's going to come up in the expense report, but while we're on the subject, I mean, is there a limited amount of funds that we have and at some point in time, if we don't be, if we don't get reimbursed, that we would have to kind of limit the general assistance that we can provide?
Legally, you have to pay whatever is.
That's one of the two accounts that you can overspend, that and your order maintenance account. So, you have to meet the need, whatever the general assistance director determines that would be.
So, it's not really a budget concern, it's just the idea it happens?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're busy.
I'm sure you are. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions with revenues? Moving on to the expenses, total expenditures for the month of November were $398,763. Of this, 64% or $255,000 was related to personnel services, which includes wages and benefits. Contractual services made up approximately 25% at $100,000. This is primarily due to winter public, winter public works of $24,000, waste disposal fees of $23,000, legal expenses of 13, and town building expenses of $11,000 where we pay for the heating oil, electricity, and telephone for the departments. Contractual services also includes just under $7,000 for costs associated with the November election that falls under town clerks and registry of deed payments for the 2010-11 tax liens of $3,000 and service agreement payments with Harris Computers under technology that amounted to $2,000. Repair and maintenance or supplies made up 12% of November's total expenditures at $46,000. This is primarily due to gas and fuel purchases. And capital purchases made up only 4% at $15,000 and that was due to an MTM roof payment. So, that's what I have for activity and expenses unless you have questions for me.
Any questions from the council? You're all good, thank you.
And just on a side note, I usually do this every month, as of November thirtieth, we've collected ninety-seven, ninety-seven percent or four point six million of the September portion of the tax commitment. When we look at the total tax commitment, as of the same date, November thirtieth, we've collected forty-eight percent, which is slightly below last year when we were fifty percent collected at this time. So just so you're aware.
May I ask a question? Have you had many people coming in just asking for help with just as far as spreading out the taxes? I mean, have we seen much?
We've actually had, I believe Kathleen was telling me just today, she submitted like thirty-five lien discharges and, but people have been coming in and working payments plans with her and working on options, so.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Is Western Maine Transportation, the Lisbon Connection?
If you want, we'll start on that if you want, okay? This, first of all, I've been, since I've taken chair, this is probably something Steve probably hates me coming in his office every day because we talk about this at length. First thing I want to do is I really want to thank the whole group of people that have come in and have been really concerned about this because the way you've addressed it's really given us more urgency to actually go out and try to find a solve for it. You show up, you're very polite and give us all the information you can and actually we, tell you what, we've been working really hard. There hasn't been a day in the last two weeks I haven't stopped in Steve's office every day and actually asked him where we were, who we contacted, what the response has been. And Steve will give a little bit more of an update, but we've been looking, from within the town, we've been looking to our representatives. You know, we have people that represent us to the, our state government to see what they can find. Steve's actually gone out of that area also and if met with DOT, AVCOG, and just not made phone calls, but actually gone and sit with the people. Our other representatives from state, I don't think there's no era that we have not been touched. The downfall is that most of the people are basically saying, this is just one of many cuts to come, just be prepared. This is just the first of your, which is very sad to hear because it really doesn't give us a whole lot of encouragement to go out. Steve does have some ideas. I've been dealing with some people that actually work on a federal level and they basically said, you know, if you can try to solve this within your own town and make a long-term solve, that's your better than the idea of relying on outside people because the outside sources are drying up, which we see and we're going to see more and more of. So Steve has some information tonight and I just want to thank Steve for, it's, if there's any way this possibly can be done and we haven't given up hope, Steve is going to get it done. And I know we were putting a bug in the air with our local representatives to be sitting in offices and try to make this happen. So Steve has some what we've been going through and who he's talked to and what we're trying to do locally to try to make this happen. But again, thank you, we do appreciate, appreciate the way you've been handling this, we really do.
I'll just give you a quick scenario, it could be lengthy because we've had a lot of people to deal with, but our funding for this bus service, basically we supplied approximately twenty-six thousand, now it comes out of the town budget. And the rest of that funding, which is just under seventy thousand, has been coming out of the federal, FTA, Federal Transportation Agency. And each year the expenses got higher to run the city link and also to run the bus Lisbon connection. Money got put into the city link and not the Lisbon connection. So we, I first, I started with the AVCOG people who run the ATRC and they have been talking amongst themselves to try to see if they have any funding. No. I've tried to work with MDOT and for some reason I can't get them to respond back. They will respond to other people, but not to me. But we have also contacted Congressman Michaud's office and Senator Susan Collins' office and these two people have worked extremely hard for us and I think they are the ones who've come up with, we hope, is a solution. Michaud's office and Collins' office have been working with their people down in Washington, DC to see if there's funding available. I talked today to the director, the Federal Transportation Agency down in Cambridge, Mass, and he has come up with sixty thousand dollars that he feels should be available to us, but it has to come out of the governor's office. It has to be a request for, from Governor LePage to move that funding, which is currently not being used, okay, down to the ATRC or an AVCOG. So I have our two representatives in this town work on that and hopefully tomorrow I'll have some answers on that. I'm getting a little pushback from MDOT, but I think if it comes out of the governor's office, that pushback will stop. Long-term, Rick Green and I have put together a cost estimate. We've actually looked at a bus, a twenty-two passenger bus that Mr. Stewart has here in town. We've put together costs on a spreadsheet for a bus driver, one and a half bus drivers because it's a, it's a long route, it's a twelve-hour day for these trips and with benefits and just operational costs for doing the mileage that we'd have to do. It's still sixty-seven thousand dollars a year to operate, which is considerably less than what Western Maine Transportation says it costs. So, and they have a lot more overhead, so Rick and I feel that this is a recommendation that eventually will come to the council and the school committee. They feel that there is a need and for this bus service just for the school alone to better transport teams and things like that. So having a bus would be beneficial to them. But also we feel we can do it cheaper. And my question to the people at AVCOG who the funding generally comes from, if the town of Lisbon was to run this bus service, would we still be eligible for the federal funding and to offset our costs? And they're working on that. But in the meantime, Rick and I, Rick Green and I talked today. We're hoping we can buy some time and we'll have an answer by the end of the week and I will push really hard for that to make sure that on December thirty-first, that will not be the last day. I am very, not confident, but I, I'm getting some good responses out of Senator Collins' office and Congressman Michaud's office and we will continue to work on that the rest of this week. I'll be on the phone with them first thing tomorrow morning and see where we are. But, and I will be on the phone with Senator Mason and along with Representative Craft to see if they can, they seem to get into the governor's office better than I can. So see if we can get that money appropriated and moved so it can be done. It just has to come out of the governor's office request. And if, as long as he says it's going to be moved, then AVCOG feels that Western Transportation will continue to run the bus service if they know the funding is there. So we are, we have some answers real soon.
We've been pushing really hard, we really have, and it's definitely, a day hasn't gone by that, that hasn't been pushed for Steve quite hard to find some answers. One thing that we would ask of you folks is to, it doesn't hurt to have other people calling, our local representatives are, you know, it's always nice to get some encouragement so they can go in and actually say that they've been, you know, being pushed by many. So again, just the idea of, you know, from our local representatives to all the way to the governor's office, if you can make phone calls, write letters and emails, it doesn't hurt. I wish we could promise that December thirtieth would have the funding, but you know, unfortunately we can't make that promise. You know, we've talked about some type of emergency ways, but it, the town itself to come up with the rest of the funding would be very difficult. But we haven't gave up hope yet. I mean, one of the things that really kind of threw us down a little bit is we, as you sat through the meeting where they thought they could actually run through the end of February and then for them to turn around and say December's the end actually really cuts a lot of time out of our planning. So we're working with you, we definitely, again, we appreciate your efforts and hopefully we can make it happen, but phone calls from your end definitely helps.
You have gotten a response from Jennifer Williams, I saw her draft, so you've got their attention, you've gotten MDOT's attention and certainly has our attention, so we, I think, and I'm hearing it from other sources, Western Maine Transportation, like they know we're shaking the trees and I think we'll get the fruit, I'm hoping, keep at it.
But Steve will keep you informed.
Yeah.
So if anything comes up or what we can do.
Okay.
All right. I wish we had better news, but we are definitely working on it. It hasn't been pushed aside by any means. Thank you. Next item?
Is C Town Manager's Report.
Well, bus was one of the things I was going to talk about, but dispatch discussions, just to keep the public informed. Chief Brooks and I attended the Andrews Goggin County Budget Committee meeting. The county, we're still working with eleven communities who are trying to consolidate the county budget dispatch here in Lisbon. They all feel that it is the most cost-effective way to do things and it gives us a long-term plan to look at having one dispatch center, but right now, the idea of coming here is we're being supported pretty heavily by all the communities outside of Lewiston, Auburn and Poland Springs. So the county commissioners or the county budget committee approved the sheriff's office budget for the upcoming year, but they did not approve the, their reserve account, which was requested to buy new equipment. They put it back on the county commissioners to come up with a decision on what they want to do with their county dispatch. And it's, that's been a pretty good battle, but I'm going to say Chief Brooks has really put tremendous amount of time into this and a lot of energy and I think, like we've said to the commissioners and to LA, and we're actually getting support from Lewiston, which is kind of a good partnership, I think, that this is a good plan, it solves a lot of the county issues without spending, and saves county dollars and saves all of the towns some money. So we're hoping that will pass through. I also included in your packets just a brief summary of AVCOG's Finance Committee and Audit. If you have any questions on that, let me know. I've got the full audit in my office if you'd like to see it. And I'd also like to just comment about the people who participated in the giving tree here for, in Lisbon. Judy Goddard, and I call them her elves, but really just a huge amount of volunteers have done an absolutely outstanding job of fulfilling the needs of children who just weren't able to get Christmas presents. And I can tell you, this room, last week this room was filled with presents and donations. It was, I never thought I'd see it empty again. And it was this room, it was a room behind me and then the police department's conference room were filled with stuff. And one of the elves is sitting over there along with a lot of the staff from this, our municipal staff have donated a tremendous amount of their time and along with just a lot of other volunteers. It's impressive and they did a great job and I want to thank them and I'm sure the recipients will be, thank them as well, but nice outreach and good, a lot of donations from just people from all over Lisbon and I think Sabates and Durham and amazing thing to see, but thank you all. And I think that's all I have.
Twyla?
Our next item is under Appointments, Order two thousand and eleven, two, 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 Voter Registrar.
Want to explain a little bit, Steve?
The, Twyla explained the voter registrar.
There you go, she would probably be the one.
Sure. The council, every two years, needs to pick a voter registrar who is in charge of registering people to vote, so we take and process registration cards, those other things as well, petitions and that sort of thing. So just need to appoint a person to be appointed for two years.
Okay.
In the past, that was you, correct?
Yes, it has been, yep.
So you need to take a vote.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Twyla Lisette as the voter registrar.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
We're passed, five zero.
Way too good of a job, Twyla, you're always.
Never let you off the hook.
That's right.
Thank you.
Next item?
Is Council Communications.
Does anybody have anything to add tonight?
Yeah, friend.
Sure.
I'd just like to tell everybody, the town constituents, that have a merry Christmas and a happy new year and have a safe one.
Thank you, Roger.
I want to also again, say thank you to the planning board for all the hard work they've done on all this zoning map and all the zoning changes and I know it's been going on since I was back on the planning board several years ago, we were dealing with the same issue. So thank you guys for everything you put into this and doing a good job on that, that we got a nice package, we could just go right ahead and approve. Thank you.
Good job. Dina, you're all set?
I'm set. I would like to thank the council and Steve Eldridge for welcoming me to the council. It's been great, everyone has been positive and I think it's, it's an honor to be able to help my fellow Lisbon citizens to make our town a better place and I, and I really am honored by it. And it's especially nice to be more involved in town just by visiting the town office more often so that I can get information that I need. Every now and then there's an issue that comes up on the agenda or something that I need to get more background on and everybody's very helpful from the clerk's office to the town manager's office and other counselors as well, so I appreciate that. And I saw the elves and the gifts at work and I felt like I walked into Santa's workshop when I walked around the corner and I have to say that it's a really great testament to the people who live in Lisbon and the surrounding area because I helped wrap a few gifts because I had a little bit of spare time one afternoon and I noticed that people who gave, when people came in and noticed there were more gifts that need to, needed to be purchased, they took on more of that burden. Many people who wrapped gifts put additional gifts with those gifts, they put personal messages for the season and I thought that was really touching. It really made me proud to be a part of it, so I'm, I hope everyone has a wonderful Christmas too. I think it's, it's, it's been a tough year and we don't necessarily have an easier year to move into, but we certainly have a positive outlook. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I just want to add the, as you heard earlier, our budget season has kind of officially kicked off, I guess, if you want to call it that. It is going to be a trying year, as it is always. I mean, I don't think there's been an easier year since I've been aboard and this year's going to prove to be the same. I just want to make sure everybody's very aware that we do actually put out a, an agenda for our workshops. All the information that's, that, for those workshops may not always be online. We're going to try to do a highlight of, outline of it, but our meetings be, are very fluid and sometimes they change, so we want to make sure that we don't get held to the fire that everything's listed. But again, everything's going to be very open. We actually started a very kind of different way of doing the budget this year and I assure everybody that any counselor, anybody on advisory board has any questions about any particular line, they've actually always been well addressed. I mean, I don't think there's ever been a question that hasn't been answered. We do change the budget the way we do it every year. Really don't change the budget, we just change the way we actually go through format of doing it. And I'm not sure if there's a perfect way, but we try to do it the best way so everybody's informed and can make the best decision. So it is going to be a trying year, so if anybody wants to keep up with us, I mean, we do have the workshops and as those workshops go on, just take all your notes because we're going to have some public hearings. Working with the school and what our needs are, it's going to be another year where our expenses are going up and our revenues are dropping, so it doesn't take a whole lot of math to figure out that it's going to be a challenging year. So again, keep with, keep with us and I think the council actually is going to do their best to have a very open budget season and hopefully we'll get some input from a lot of people and we'll have the best decisions to make and do the best for the taxpayers. I do want to thank everybody in town, employees and volunteers for the giving trees and the presents. It doesn't, you don't have to stand around very long during this to believe there is a little bit of magic in Christmas because it's amazing what happens. And you know, some of the town employees are going over and beyond what they need to do, do this, and I'm not just talking about during the day, we're talking evenings and shopping and going, making phone calls. And we had a lot of people that actually really had other places to be, but they were here doing it. You know, I mean, it wasn't because they just had spare time, it's because they really, it's in their heart, you know, which is really hard to, it's hard to explain, but we thank you very much because there's a lot of people on Christmas Day that's going to be very satisfied and it's really due to their, their putting out and going over and beyond. But again, we want to thank everybody and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and we'll keep working on that bus. You know, it is, it is definitely nothing that's going to fall from the side and hopefully we can try to make that happen. Thank you. Next?
Is under Executive Session, Order two thousand and eleven, two, twenty-three, to go into executive session, per one MRSA, Section four oh five, six D, Labor Negotiations, Sergeant's Unit.
We're all set on that, we don't need to do that.
Oh, okay. To adjourn, Order two thousand and eleven, two. To adjourn, Order 2011-224.
Does anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? We do have a workshop following, it's just a council's workshop, so...